...Oregon City desires that the pioneers again defeat the Lions and the City Council of West Lynn desires that the Lions again defeat the pioneers. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of Oregon City and the City Council of West Lynn, hereby recognize and commend all citizens who have participated in this annual Gridiron event and support the efforts of the current teams by proclaiming September 25th, 2014 to be Oregon City-West Lynn rivalry day. We further recommend, in the spirit of the day, that all citizens wear clothing of appropriate colors and refrain from crossing the river unless business requires until game time. This is signed by myself and by Mayor Kovash of West Lynn. Commissioner Smith, who are the longtime winners of this rivalry?
Oregon City is still ahead.
Yes, they are.
Not by much.
No, not by much.
We had a ten-year...
Not so good time.
Ten-year...
Ten years of losses in a row, yeah. We broke that.
We broke that last year.
And this year should be a good year, too.
Okay, very good. So, I also, I got chastised by Commissioner Smith last time. I did a proclamation regarding the coin flip, the reenactment of the coin flip.
Oh, thank you.
And I failed to put a "whereas" into the proclamation. I'm not going to read the proclamation all over, but I am going to, I'm going to put, I'm going to read in a "whereas" that has been inserted as one, two, three, four, five, six, the seventh, we have a new seventh proclamation, everything else has gone down. "Whereas the coin toss is believed to have occurred at the Ermitaing House, the last remaining Hudson's Bay Company residential structure in the United States."
That sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much. And one thing that was missing from the proclamation, we had a prints of the kind of coin that was used in the coin toss. We have three of them there, and I think I'm correct, two of them are heads and one of them are tails. And it was a two out of three win, actually, with Portland getting the two. And when we had the coin toss, there was this poll that was taken over the internet to determine which Oregon city would be, heads or tails, and majority of the people replied heads, I believe that's correct. And again, it came out two heads, one tail. And so what we did is we recognized the name Portland, but I did end it, I think, by saying that therefore, I Doug Neely, Mayor of Oregon City, do proclaim St. Paul will continue be named Portland until Oregon City has another reenactment of the Pettigrove Lovejoy Coin Toss. So the opportunity for it to be named Boston is still there. I don't know how happy that makes you, Jonathan. Did you not originate from, aren't you an immigrant from Boston? Who are you rooting for?
That's a loaded question.
Jonathan is our Main Street Director, whatever your title is.
Executive Director.
Executive Director, okay, very good. What we're going to do now is actually get a update on the Main Street Oregon City from Jonathan Stone, and it does say Executive Director here. Please come on forward.
And of course, he's rooting for Oregon City, not Boston.
Yeah.
In this capacity, I'm rooting for Oregon City, so. Oh, and, yeah, not West Lynn, I'm sorry, my mind is in other places at the moment.
Not in West Lynn, I was...
Actually turned down an opportunity to live in West Lynn when I moved here.
That was very smart.
The walk to work was shorter, just over the bridge.
Good decision nevertheless.
So, good evening, my name is Jonathan Stone and I'm the Executive Director of Main Street Oregon City. And we're here this evening to give you a brief update on some of what we've been doing over the past, well, since I got here. And what we see into the future, especially over the next five years, just a couple people in the audience to make note, Roger Nickerson is a board member of ours, as well as Jessica Gago is our new Promotions and Marketing Coordinator for the organization.
Welcome.
And I'll explain a little bit later as to what she'll be doing. So, on the walk up here, I encountered a few of you, and you mentioned that you wanted it to be short and sweet, so I will make it as short as I can.
There was only one, that's special.
But I told Nancy how long the presentation could be, so I'll just keep that to...
We want to see it all.
I'll keep that to myself and try to keep to the 10 minutes that I've been allotted. So, briefly, we're going to give a refresher just on what Main Street Oregon City is as an organization, and then spend a little bit of time diving into our brand strategy, which some of you may have heard about as a major project we worked on over the past five or six months. And then speak to a bit, I wouldn't call it a five-year plan, it's a five-year outlook, strategy, objectives, those kinds of things. Then talk a little bit about what's currently in the works on our desks before we move on to the other things that the five-year plan might allude to, that we would be working on. So, briefly, I'd like to congratulate and thank our board. We have two new members that were appointed to vacancies at the last board meeting, and that is Andy Bush, replacing Paul Culp, and Michael Berman, who owns the 505, who's replacing Tim Tofti. And then you also notice that our plan is to grow the board to 11 members in October or when our annual meeting is held. As you probably know, we're led by Board of Directors and principally have four committees, which follow the Main Street approach, and that is Organization and Capacity Development, Marketing and Promotions, Events Management, Design, which would be anything related to streetscape and beautification, and Economic Development or Restructuring, which is focused on business recruitment, retention, and such. There we go. Just to remind you briefly, things that we've worked on, and much of this is before my time, and so I hope I can do it justice, but downtown's been through a lot over the past five years, I would say, and a lot of good and a lot of challenges as well, especially with the closing of the bridge, but that we seem to have emerged out the other side, and I would like to credit that to a lot of the work that Main Street has been doing, and our property owners and stakeholders have been doing in collaboration with the city, metro, and what have you. But, so this slide speaks to some of the work that has been going on. I'm skipping over some things because I want to get to the stuff that is new. So, just over the past, since 2009, we've helped recruit and/or have recruited ourselves in partnership with yourself and other organizations, actually, that number's wrong, it's over, I think it's over 3.6 million, but it comes out to about $45,000 a month in outside investment into downtown, in addition to private investment that has been invested in downtown, and those dollars have come from all over the place. Just a brief reminder, we are in an economic improvement district and we are up for renewal very shortly, but this is just the map of that district, and that is a 1% assessed value per year with a maximum of 1,950 per year. And this represents a good chunk of our funding and has, I think, has allowed us to work much faster than other Main Street organizations might have the opportunity to work because our focus can be closer to, I mean, I'm searching for the wrong words, when you're not having to fundraise every single day, that you can focus a lot more on getting work done. And when you ask the state program directors and national program directors, you know, what do you think of our progress, and all of them are overwhelmingly impressed with the amount of work, the total dollars invested, and everything that's happened downtown is at a much accelerated place than they would expect from a Main Street organization that's funded in a different way. And so we're very grateful that our property owners have supported the EID and look forward to them continuing to support an EID into the future. So, because of the change in staffing over the past year, we managed to save more money than we expected to because we were spending less money, and so our intention for this next fiscal year is to invest some of those savings and spend at a little bit faster rate on projects that may, have not necessarily been determined yet, but if there's appropriate opportunities that present themselves, then fortunately, we have the reserves to help us match, say for instance, the Metro Enhancement Grant, which we received, which we probably wouldn't have been able to do otherwise without those savings. Just a brief bit about our business mix, we have a group of interns that are working, and actually, next week is their last week, and they've been very productive, I'm going to be sad to see them go, but they've been doing a business and property database in a way that I'm pretty sure hasn't been done for downtown in the past, where we're inventorying every single tenant unit in the district. And what that has allowed us to do is to develop a baseline, but then as businesses come and go, we can very quickly update our stats and understand exactly where our mix is. But what's nice in this chart is best we can infer, because interns, myself, weren't here in 2009, but that we were at about a 29% vacancy rate during that time, and we're down to under 12. And so that is a dramatic difference in vacancy downtown, and it's constantly changing, especially with the new spaces coming online and new tenants that are lined up to fill them. So, we have at least, an at least 40% active use, and we have 30 net new businesses, actually, that number's going up as we speak, too. But I would say that these are pretty impressive statistics as downtown continues to change. So, this brand project, walked in, we're like, well, we need a new website, well, we need to do some other things, and, well, what is it supposed to look like? And so it began a conversation about visual branding, which was never really done for downtown, and a common visual framework was never developed, and like, well, before you develop a visual framework, you need to develop a strategic framework, and coming into the district, I was like, everybody knows where Main Street's going, no, everybody knows that Main Street's going to somewhere awesome, but they don't necessarily know precisely in what direction. And so we wanted to understand that ourselves as an organization, and then to bring our stakeholders along on a unified vision, not just on, we see it as a thriving shopping district, but what is our competitive positioning? And so we ended up working with Bill Baker, who fortunately lives just down the road, and he worked on the Shrimp on the Barbie campaign in Australia, but he's done like over 300 small communities in the US and abroad, so he certainly has the credentials and experience to help guide us through this process. Because of Paul Culp and myself, we were able to limit his time on the engagement and just get him for the best parts, which is his insight, and do most of the work in-house, but to get his stamp on it. And so we learned some really interesting things, and I wanted to share those with you as, because they really inform where Main Street is going. Sorry, I'm not texting, I'm just looking at my, oh dear. Okay. Five more minutes, I hope.
We want to hear it.
But we did, we surveyed 400 residents of Oregon City and the Portland metro area, and we asked them, including employees of downtown and a wide variety of people, and we discovered some interesting things, but one of the questions that we asked was, if downtown was a person, how would you characterize them? And not everyone answered the question in the most appropriate way, but it at least allowed us to say, you know, identify personality, and what are some of those keywords that might drive some of that thinking? Then, what is the one thing that is unique to downtown? Well, obviously, the elevator is highly ranked, the falls, history, but I also want to point out the word "small town," and those are, not that we're designing a brand around a word chart, this just sort of helps reinforce some of our thinking. So, we came up with four possible concepts, and that was a Historic River District, Small Town slash Oasis, sorry, Oasis in the metro, Reinvention of a Mill Town, and Oregon's first or original Main Street, we weren't sure what word might be used at the time. And as you, each of those has, if you went on them exclusively, has different implications to how you might approach marketing the district, how you might approach tenementing the district, and we ended up at a combination of the four, understanding that while River District's possible, when you're in downtown, you never see the river, at least at this time, so not the best positioning. This idea of Oasis in the metro, we're not quite there yet, but, and I'll explain a little bit more what it means, because it filtered into the final concept, and then Reinvention of Mill Town might divorce us from some of the character that we have developed over the years. The Mill Town was sort of a more recent vibe that took over downtown. So, but what we ended up with, and this is just a statement, I'll give the highlights, is that our small-town feel is incredibly important, and that if you cross, once you cross the bridges here, you've arrived in a different place. And unlike any other town in the Portland metro region, we are the small-town experience. And I think the river helps us because it provides that separation, but, and we do have suburban-type neighborhoods, but with our historic core and with downtown, it is unlike any other small-town experience in the metro. Now, if McMinnville was within the metro region, we might have a run for our money on this distinction, but they're not, and so we can claim it. And this idea of a convenient and relaxed destination, dining, shopping, entertainment, those are in five years, is as believable that this is what it could be. And so simultaneously, the living room, can we reestablish downtown as the civic center of Oregon City? And then how do we integrate cultural heritage into that, especially as we're thinking about dovetailing into tourism efforts and cultivating pride in what our city is all about? So, key experience themes that came out of this that we thought would support the brand, dining is one of them, shopping, public cultural experiences, we were really refreshed when we were doing social media around the First City Celebration, that people started reminiscing about all of the traditional events that they had experienced in the past, and so that was kind of cool. And then also recreation, downtown, we believe, and this relates to tourism as well, is the most well-positioned business district in the county to take advantage of being that jumping-off point. Maybe not for the mountain, but for any of the other tourism activities that the county does. And so how do we, when we say, let's go for a bike tour of Clackamas County, start and end in Oregon City. Go for a river, something or other, start and end in Oregon City. And downtown, with that, if that mentality succeeds, stands to benefit greatly from that. Oh, values, so family-friendly, we really want to place an emphasis on that, and independent and local are also important. And not to forget our past, that reinvention and resilience are important values that we have as a district, and then by extension, the city. Another reason this was brought about is that Main Street is a program, it's also a street, but it's not necessarily a district. And so what do people call downtown, how do they refer to downtown? And in our research, we discovered they refer to it, as you might expect, downtown. So, and in order to simplify, we decided to go with downtown Oregon City as our primary language referring to the district. This will actually improve social media searchability and a whole bunch of other things as well. But then to allude to the history, just making that statement that we are Oregon's first Main Street is something that we're very proud of. So, what does this mean for five-year objectives? What's my plus time? My timer's gone out the other end. But five-year objectives, goals, and proposed activities. So the board sat down over the past couple months to really hammer these out, and what are the things that we want to be working on over the next five years? And one of those is to continue our success at reducing the vacancy rate. Let's get it below 5%, let's get it to where we have a waiting list for desirable places, tenant spaces. And then in that process, convert, first, continue to convert virtual uses to active uses, and revisit and really push on this idea of housing within the district, and continue investment in existing structures. Our only public space downtown is the county's plaza or the street, and how do we activate those in a way that also makes sure that commerce can continue to happen as freely as possible, but also provides a benefit to downtown, I mean, benefit to downtown users? And ultimately, how do we integrate with the mill site, and what can our organization do to make sure that that linkage is as strong as possible? And then on the flip side, how do we make a stronger link between the north end and the historic core, so going past the transit center? And then, what do we do to continue to reinforce the idea of downtown as the civic center of Oregon City? We have some challenges, we're actively working on this, so the challenges have been reframed as opportunities, but the challenges are real, we do have a limited parking supply at peak times, there's unproven market for housing, our foot traffic is growing, but it's still limited, and there are still persistent but shifting misconceptions about Oregon City and downtown. And in our research, and to speak to this next point, we use the Net Promoter Score to measure our respondents. If you're not familiar with what Net Promoter Score is, a lot of large companies use this, it's a, the question is, how likely are you to recommend whatever to selected a person and/or group, and so downtown to family, friends, coworkers, what have you. And if the answer's between 1 and 6, they're considered a detractor, 7 or 8 is considered neutral, it's only 9 or 10 where they're considered promoters. And so we filtered the data by promoters, and what did we discover? That was a group that was the most likely to hop in the car and go to Portland for dining and shopping. And what that says is that now, our biggest supporters, the ones that are singing the praises of downtown, aren't finding what they want and the experiences they want in the district. And that was a pretty profound discovery, I think. I'm sure Mayor Neely would contest its statistical significance, but it at least provides a bite to our thinking. And we do continue to have a development funding gap for new construction and adaptive reuse, and like I said, we have limited available space for events and a limited event infrastructure. So, opportunities, those are pretty clear, I'm going to skip over those. Then, proposed activities, we brainstormed a whole bunch of things, and so some of the things that we're beginning to look at after what's currently on our desk are this idea of ongoing events, it could be a public market or similar, so like a Saturday market, or it could be an art walk, or reintroducing those kinds of things, but increase the programming, and then as well as focus on seasonal programming and promotions. And we're very fortunate to have Jessica here to help us keep the eye on that ball. One of the things that our Economic Restructure Committee is looking at is the Housing Development Toolkit, which would include identifying possible financing for housing, but also, you know, tailoring it to downtown and saying, you want to bring housing to downtown, we want you to, here's how we're going to do it together, and bring those people to the table. And Roger, who's the Chair of our Economic Restructure Committee, has a lot of experience in this, and we've been discussing the ideas of partnership with universities, which we've done in the past, but how do we strengthen those? Quiet Zone, depending on the developer, is a very important issue, and how do we make sure that that doesn't become an encumbrance to possible housing coming downtown? Our railroad, for example, is a major circulation pattern, but is not a beautiful one. And if you ask a lot of our north-end stakeholders, not a lot of attention has been paid down there, and so over the next five years, we'd really like to pay attention to that, especially as we answer the housing question of, where can you fit 50 housing units? Well, not in the historic core, it's not going to work, or likely won't work, but you're looking at the mill site, or you're looking at the north end of downtown. Street furniture, how do we acquire more of it and put it in strategic places, and is there opportunity to work with the county to make the plaza more people-friendly rather than just a empty space that only works when it's actively programmed? And then maybe looking at the, one of the parking studies, key recommendations was the public access of private lots, and how that might simply look is, after 5:00 PM, when those lots are no longer needed for professional workers, do we develop signage, unified signage, and can we invite dinner-goers and whatnot into those lots because, so we can reduce the on-street parking demand? So, currently on our desk, very briefly, sign code, you guys are well aware of that, but we're also very keen on the things that do affect downtown, and that is A-frames, light pole banners, temporary banners, and the mural program, and so the things that we're working with, planning and you all, to make sure that they support the district in the best way possible. Retail business mix, I spoke to, that'll eventually inform our business recruitment strategy. And Marketing Coordinator, she's already got off the ground running, but since I've begun, we've increased our Facebook likes, just as a measure, from 400 to 1,400, and that we'll be actively working with businesses on how to engage with us in a collaborative way. And Public Relations and Media, Event Management, and then the continuing development of our email marketing database. We just introduced a micro grant program last month, or sorry, last week, and what we're able to do with some of those resources that we have is to give up to $1,000 to business owners or property owners to enhance the storefront experience, and primarily nightscape and visibility during the day, so things that would play into that would be lighting, so that merchandise can be seen during the closed hours, and then signage that is professional. If you look downtown, all the signage that people like has all been funded by a grant in some way. And so with that, understanding that's why we introduced that. So, street banners, don't judge the colors, because we're still working on the colors, but the idea is that we're going to bring back street banners from the mill site to the interpretive center, and that's one way to visually link the whole district. And then, the Metro Enhancement Grant, which you guys are already aware of, but that gives us, with our match, up to $45,000, including design fees, to invest in street banners as well as other things. I know one of the topics that the Design Committee will be talking about on Thursday is potential lighting of trees downtown. Car show, you're getting ready, you'll be seeing the gateway concept finally emerge, and what we've chosen for this was a moving gateway, and so it's a series of sculptures that start at the corner of 10th and 99 and move people through the district, so where you see one, you see another, you see another, and just kind of continue on through, it's actually pretty cool. I gave you screenshots of our new website, but also keep in mind that that is going to be printed mats and kiosks as well, but our new website will feature pages for every single one of our businesses, will be an interactive map with mobile optimized, and hopefully a very useful tool for all of our stakeholders. So that is my whirlwind, not-so-10-minute presentation. I'm sorry, Nancy.
That was great. That was...
You needn't apologize, and my guess is, we'll take some more of that time and perhaps discussion and comments here. I have some things to say, but I'll invite other commissioners to speak to this if they wish. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Paulie first.
I was just going to say, so much has happened in such a short period of time that you have come on, and I really like the inclusivity that we're having on Main Street, that feeling, and the business owners, there's more involvement now with the committee structure, and I like all the ideas that are coming, and the website and the marketing, and it feels like there's some pieces coming together there that necessarily haven't been as strong, so, thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Spent a lot of time on Main Street this summer, and I don't know, I mean, I've lived in Oregon City my whole life, and so I don't ever remember, there's ebbs and flows of downtown, and there always has been, and I've said this before, I've never seen Main Street to the level it is right now, ever. You know, it's gone up and down, but this is the highest I've ever remembered seeing it. Not only because of the renovations to our iconic, you know, structures like the bridge and the elevator and Singer Falls, and I think it was so great of Oregon City and Main Street and all these other entities to focus on those icons, because I think that and... to focus on those icons, because I think that in one way definitely helped re-energize people downtown. But just seeing the individual storefronts, we've all talked about it tonight at our Urban Renewal Commission meeting. I walked down, I think Eric shared a story of something his son said on Main Street today or this week. I was down on Main Street today, and I was walking down the street, and there was some people coming, you know, passing me. And, you know, you just hear people talking, and I didn't talk to them, I didn't kind of engage with them, but I saw this woman passing, and she says, I just love this, I can't, I love this small town, or something, I love this town, something like that. But every time you go down there, there's people stopping and looking at the Masonic Lodge getting painted, or the bank building getting renovated, or any of these numerous things, businesses moving in. It's so active downtown, even just in the last month compared to what it was prior to that. And you can't, anytime I go walking down Main Street, I run into someone whose that's all they're talking about, and they're excited. And I was at Singer Hill one day after doing a walking tour, and most of the people that are walking around that I've engaged with or talked to are not from Oregon City. And some of the people that I've had on, I haven't done as many walking tours this summer, but on the tours that I have given, most everyone was from out of Oregon City that were coming specifically for the tours. And in addition to that, we're shocked about the difference that Oregon City has made. Most of these people have been to Oregon City at some point in their lifetime, but have never seen it like this, and we're kind of surprised by it. So I think it's really great to talk to people that have, you know, it's been five or 10 years since they've been to Oregon City, and they come into Oregon City and they can't believe it's the same place. So I just, I think it's exciting to see the new visuals that are happening. I think the addition of the gateway artwork and the banners, I think will just, you know, take it to another level. And I don't think it's going to be long before that vacancy rate is gone. I mean, it's very close now. I think I've counted like three spots, you know, three or four spots on Main Street that are empty, and I know that some of those are going to be filled, so it's really exciting to see that.
Yes, a couple of comments I'd like to make. I presume a chunk of that 12% vacancy is in the Sonic Lodge, and I don't think that's going to last forever, for very long. I just like Commissioner Smith, and I know I've talked to other commissioners too, the rapidity of which occurred, but the quality that's there is, to me, amazing.
Amazing.
I'd like to make a couple of comments on the presentation. You mentioned the river being the separation point. You should say the rivers are the separation point, because the confluence of the Clackamas and Willamette actually separates us from the whole metro area. I don't expect emphasis on the Clackamas, it's still an important resource. It drains, it's a basin, drains almost all of the area between Mount Hood and Mount Jefferson. It's just a huge drainage area. Those people remember the 96 flood, and of course, as impressive as Willamette River backed up into Oregon City. But before that happened, Clackamas River was a raging torrent. I mean, anybody driving over a bridge and looking down on it would say, holy mackerel, looks like the Rogue River. I mean, it's extremely impressive. And it is something that, those two rivers together, I think, put us in a very unique place. The other thing had to do with Mill City, and I realize the necessity to emphasize other things, but Mill City, I think, is a very important component. I mean, the reason Hudson's Bay Company, one of the main reasons Hudson's Bay Company located, they moved from, when McGlaughlin came here in '23, Astoria was the center, and he made a decision early on to move it, and one of the reasons was the falls. And the reason people went there right away was because of that falls and the industry that started off very, very early. He started the raceway for the lumber mill in 1829. And so that has to be a big story in the story.
I agree. And I'll just clarify, so when we were setting out to do this brand, was to understand the district as it relates to the city, as it relates to the heritage area, as it relates to the metro. So in that sense, we were trying to position the business district, and so, and, which is, but, the point is very fair, that, you know, as the city looks to position itself and tell its sort of broader story, and as we, you know, nod to that, that those are very important components.
Well, that story's being told as we develop the public access to the falls, that story will be told, but, you know, there have been concerns of, well, how fast will development occur there? Development will occur very rapidly. It might not be at the mill site initially, but the fact people can get to the falls, I anticipate north, north Main Street is going to see a lot of things moving as the public access occurs. And so that tie-in is, I think, really important to this. Any other comments?
Well, one comment I would say is, Jonathan, that we have so many great things going on in Oregon City with Main Street, with, we're going to get a presentation from BiLocal, the Chamber. Are you guys all actively engaging each other in what's going on, so that the Chamber knows? And I know Eric goes to every meeting, I think there probably is, on businesses, but...
I have a non-voting seat on the Chamber Board, as well as Amber, the Executive Director, has a non-voting seat on our board. And I do attend the BiLocal meetings, as well as some of the BiLocal members are also involved in our organization in volunteer capacity as well.
Cross-marketing is huge, it's very important, and I just...
Very much divide and conquer is really what we want to do, so...
Yes, but I think you guys are doing an awesome job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And that brings us to BiLocal presentation.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Oh, excuse me, Bob Mahoney, please come forward.
Oh, yeah?
Well, no, you're on the list. Were you going to speak to this, or your inner citizens comment?
This is fine. This will be fine. This right in with what I got to say.
Now, if you vary from the discussion here, then I'll chop you off and have you as Assistant Citizen's Comment. So you're going to tie it to the mill, right? No, no. You tied to Main Street, right?
It all ties in, that's what I heard you say. Bob Mahoney, Oregon City. Well, I think that Jonathan gave an excellent rundown as to what we can not expect, because what we can expect is the unexpected. But what we can plan for is just an overflow of tourism in this town.
Yes.
And with it is going to bring some problems. And one of the problems in the tie-in, as I see, is McGlaughlin Boulevard, is to how to get those people from the Riverwalk or the public easement back downtown, because I think the immediate effect of tourism from all over the world, once the thing gets going and the word gets on the internet, or on Twitter, or whatever they call it. Nobody talks to each other anymore, they all tweet each other. I saw six kids the other day at Starbucks, all sitting together, and they all had these doodads in there tweeting each other, or talking, you know, nobody said a word. But the point is, the overflow and collateral benefits that this is going to have to downtown, we're talking about the Legacy Project.
Yes.
And we kind of forget about downtown, but don't.
No.
Because it's just going to ricochet right up Main Street.
Absolutely.
And I mean, you're going to have your hands full. You can see it already, and what's happening is the heritage factor, of people are bringing in their antiques and stuff like that. Memories of yesteryear are warm fuzzies.
Yes.
People like to go back and remember. Go down to the car show, people kicking tires and stuff like that, you know?
Yes.
And one of the biggest insults I ever had was, I met my girlfriend in high school, and she forgot what kind of car I drove. Now, that's an insult, isn't it?
That's an insult.
Because I loved that car. But, you know, what I'm saying is, people love history.
Right.
And Rocky and I have talked about it numerous times, about the effect that public art is going to have on the image that we portray of the heritage of this community, you know, the history, facts, and things of that nature. And also our commemoration of the people that fought in our wars, the young people that from Oregon City and stuff like that. And one of the things they did in Memorial College, seeing the first thing they did is put up a huge monument, you know, commemorating people that fell in World War II and what have you. So the offshoot and the benefits that are going to come to downtown Oregon City are going to originate in the public easement and access that we have. The sooner the better, the bigger the better, because we can accommodate more people, and once they get here, they're going to, we got to stay. And once they say, we got to stay, then they're going to want to eat, and they're going to want to buy, and they're going to want to park, where you're going to put them, you know, that kind of stuff. But if we just keep the ball going and all work together on this thing, the technicalities are going to put you to sleep.
Yeah.
Okay? But they're also going to build some bonfires, and people are going to say, you know, two psychiatrists get on an elevator, one says, good morning, the other says, hmm, what do you mean by that? Well, the same thing with zoning and stuff like that. You get into that kind of stuff, you know, and there's no reason to fight over the minutia. Just keep your eye on the prize, get this thing rolling, and you'll... The problem is, when Oregon City does change, how to contain the genie in the bottle, because we're going to have some real interesting problems with parking, and where do you put people, and stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, Representatives of the Chamber on BiLocal.
It's all on you, Laura.
Hello, welcome. All right, well, we brought a few people to support us tonight. Thank you, Mayor Neely and the Commissioners, for allowing us to present to you this evening. My name is Laura Lukish, and I have the honor of managing Citizens Bank here in Oregon City. Tonight, I am here as a founding member of BiLocal Oregon City, and as a board member of the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce, which is our governing entity. BiLocal was founded in late 2009, when a group of individuals representing small businesses came together, Carol Polly was one of them, to look for a way to support one another in a down economy. What started out as a grassroots marketing effort has grown to a community-wide support system that helps businesses support one another through cross-promotion, community outreach, and education. Tonight, we will be sharing with you the impact that BiLocal has had on our community, who is involved in these efforts, the businesses that offer ongoing support of these efforts, the upcoming educational opportunities available to businesses, and how we feel the City Commission may be able to support in these efforts.
Good evening, Mayor Neely and Commissioners. My name is Dick Orr. I work for BCT, Bitter Creek Cooperative Telephone Company, as Customer Development Consultant. And I'm here to talk about the sponsorships and how they help us. BiLocal Oregon City is fully funded through sponsorships. Each of our business leader sponsors has supported BiLocal efforts monetarily or through in-kind support of, excuse me, of $500 or greater. These funds allow us to provide free BiLocal buttons, I think we're all wearing our buttons tonight, stickers, business cards, print materials, and advertising that promotes all businesses in Oregon City. Additionally, these funds allow us to provide two to four educational events to the community. Currently, these sponsors include the BCI Group, BCT, Citizens Bank, J&amp;M Plumbing, Living Hope Church, Oregonians Credit Union, Park &amp; Electric, Magnetic Sign Company, and our newest sponsor, Oregon City News. BiLocal also has community partners that we work with, including the Farmers Market, Main Street Oregon City, and the Small Business Development Center. Thank you.
And again, thank you, Mayor Neely and the City Commission, for having us tonight. I'm Sherri Henson, I work at Columbia Bank. I'm a business banker and commercial lender, and I am going to speak to why would a business sign up with BiLocal. When businesses join BiLocal Oregon City, they're asked to commit to supporting local businesses and make a conscious decision to purchase locally when possible. After signing this commitment, the business is added to our free online directory on our website, www.bilocal.organcity.org. We currently have 195 businesses on our online directory. They are then welcomed on our Facebook page, which currently has 459 likes, and they have the opportunity to have a BiLocal Oregon City decal installed on the storefront, on the storefront end or vehicle, that's also known as being tattooed by BiLocal Oregon City. Signing up as a member of BiLocal Oregon City is free, all-inclusive, and gives business owners access to a tremendous support network, including educational opportunities. Thank you.
Mayor, City Commission, my name is Ray Stobie, and I manage the Oregon City branch of Oregonians Credit Union. And I'm here to talk to you about how we educate and the importance of social media. To date, BiLocal Oregon City has hosted 12 free educational events to business owners. These have included abbreviated courses from our local Small Business Development Center on marketing, customer service, website management and design, managing your online presence, social media, finance, guest lectures on the state of our economy, healthcare reform, and guest lectures from a nationally recognized time management and organizational expert. In June of this year, BiLocal partnered with Providence Medical, Providence Falls, and BCI Group to host a health fair and experts panel on changes in healthcare and the impacts on small business. This event allowed 12 businesses the opportunity to showcase their businesses, as well as offer the community an opportunity to ask experts about changes impacting their businesses. Our upcoming educational events include an event being held at the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center in partnership with Main Street Oregon City, and the Small Business Development Center on Business Finance on September 17th. Facebook, social media. As Sherri said, we have over 459 likes on Facebook. We also have a Twitter account with over 68 followers. As a plug, to like us if you haven't already on Facebook, and definitely follow us on Twitter as well. All new businesses are welcomed and highlighted on the BiLocal Oregon City Facebook page. BiLocal volunteers help to share and promote community events, showcase businesses, and share specials and other posts that local businesses have on Facebook. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Paul Holbrook. I am the owner of the Holbrook Insurance Agency, Farmers Insurance up on top of the hill. And I'm tweeting all of you right now, so I'm not going to say...
I love it.
I've been a member of BiLocal since 2010. I've been a Farmers Insurance Agent since 2006. The reason this is important to know is, in 2006, I came to an Oregon City Chamber of Commerce networking meeting. And I felt, at that time, I had never been so welcomed by a community, even though I did not live here, and at that time did not have an office here. It was my dream, even though I lived in southeast Portland, to have an office and grow my business here in Oregon City. I came to Oregon City every week for four years to grow my business, because I knew this community had such a great support system, and that was just a feeling. Well, in 2010, I got to move my agency here. That feeling developed into reality, because not only was my business supported by customers, of course, but it was supported by like-local businesses. My printer's here, my attorney is here, my banker is here, my bookkeeper's here. I could go on and on and on. How important is it to a business to have local resources supporting it? It's huge. To know the community is vested in a local business, that is a huge recruitment tool. And I feel like that, in itself, is one of the main missions of BiLocal. And I am so proud to be part of this community, and so proud to be part of BiLocal. And I, yes, I did write some things. So, as a small business, I know the importance of this being supported by the local community. In addition to having a business here, my business employs four people in the community. We utilize services, it's much better when talking off the cuff. I had options where to locate my business. I could have chosen just about any place, and I chose Oregon City. Seven out of 10 insurance agencies fail within the first three years. I'm lucky that I'm one of three out of 10, right? The math's right, yep? And that's because I have been so supported by this community. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Ed LaPlante, and my wife Donna and I own Magnetic Sign Company. We started our business in 1984, and we moved to this community about 13 years ago. I'm one of the founding members of BiLocal Oregon City. My little talk is about why the City of Oregon City should ask their departments to look to local businesses first. A few years ago, a... A few years ago, a city employee was complaining about his contractor's electrician not showing up at a job. A BiLocal member asked, "Why didn't they consider using Park &amp; Electric, a local electrician?" And Park &amp; showed up and did the job in a timely manner and for a fair price. Businesses of Oregon City make the city more livable. We provide services and goods, so people don't have to leave the community. And that makes Oregon City more of a place to live and raise your families. Oregon City businesses donate and volunteer. Many local charities and events benefit from the small businesses in Oregon City. And many of the businesses and their employees and their owners give time by volunteering, by donating money, and that's a big part of supporting the businesses. I have to go to my notes where I rambled. And what Oregon City businesses are really asking for, Oregon City businesses are really the strength of our community. We really don't want any guarantees of business from the city. But what we want is for the Commission to encourage their local departments to look to the Oregon City Chamber Directory, to the BiLocal Oregon City website, to anybody with a business with an Oregon City address, so that when they go out for services, they look to us first. We just would like to be considered and have a chance to do business in Oregon City, and that's what we're asking the Commission for.
Good evening. I'm Maureen Parkin with Park &amp; Electric. Park &amp; Electric has been a sponsor of BiLocal Oregon City since 2010, and I have served on the committee since then. We have been serving Oregon City for 23 years, and for the past 13 of those years from our current location on First Street in the Hilltop area. Fifty percent of our employees live in Oregon City or in the surrounding areas. Park &amp; Electric believes Oregon City's BiLocal campaign is good for business, their customers, and the community. Our customers benefit because we can provide our services at a reduced cost. With less travel time, we save fuel and labor costs. And we are happy to say that we pass these savings on to our Oregon City customers in the form of a discount on our services. Local businesses are invested in our community. Because of Park &amp; Electric's investment here, we were able to work with representatives from the City of Oregon City on the illumination of the Oregon City elevator and complete the project at a cost competitive advantage. Buying local builds community and a strong local economy. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, at this time, we present Mayor Neely and the City Commission with a call to action. You didn't think we were just gonna show up, did you? First, we seek Mayor Neely's support by proclaiming November 28th through December 6th, 2014, as BiLocal Week, to encourage people to support all local Oregon City businesses during the holidays. Of course, details of this proclamation would have to be determined at a later date. Finally, because action speaks louder than words, we challenge each of you as Commissioners to demonstrate to the business community and the citizens your commitment to the concept by during the holidays shopping right here in our local Oregon City businesses. We would ask that you commemorate this impact on our local economy by taking a photograph of yourself or having someone else photograph you while shopping local. BiLocal Oregon City will help showcase that our Commissioners care about supporting our local community through buying locally. So, that's what we ask of you today.
I love to do proclamations, and I guarantee you that will happen.
And I do a lot of shopping at Christmas time in Oregon City. I've never thought of taking a picture, but I will.
That has been our most liked pictures that we have shared on Facebook, is when we take pictures of people in action at local businesses.
Oh, I love it.
Well, I've enjoyed, several years I've been a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and the tremendous support that Oregon City gets from the Chamber in many, many ways. So many of your people are sponsors of many of the events the city holds, and we really appreciate that. And I know for certain that when it comes to contracting out services, the city looks to Oregon City first. And so, I know many of you have provided services to Oregon City. I remember the lighting of the elevator, Park &amp; Electric was very much involved in that effort. And so, I guarantee that will continue. And I think we got an excellent chamber, tremendous participation. Several people have mentioned when they've attended the Good Morning Oregon City, how large the event was for a relatively small city. And I appreciate all the work you do.
Thank you for your presentation. We do have a very strong business community here and very supportive, and your work has been great. And we look forward to growing as a business community and providing more jobs and economic vitality. And thanks for being such a big part of that.
I will make a comment, and I don't wanna embarrass anybody, but among your group there, there's somebody that's related to me.
No, we have to, uh, who is that?
No, 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 no.
No hints.
Well, actually, it's an in-law.
Oh, it's an in-law. Well, I think BiLocal has been active, very active in our city, and I really appreciate everything that you guys do.
One of the things we'd really like for the City Commission to do is to... One of the things we'd really like the City Commission to do is reiterate with the department heads how important it is to buy locally and to consider us. Like I said in my presentation, we're not looking for a handout, we're not looking for a guarantee, but we would like to have a consideration. And there's lots of great networks to do that. But I feel if the City Commission doesn't make that an active point, then it just kinda goes back to business as usual.
Well, I think that our staff does understand that. I do think that they put out RFPs, and it's a competitive bidding process, and we have to go, you know, with the group that we have to go with.
Mayor, I can try to address that when you're ready.
Go ahead.
Well, I think it was almost four years ago when I first came and got introduced to the BiLocal campaign here. And at that time, shortly after a meeting with Laurel and some other BiLocal representatives, I actually directed our departments to do just that. Currently, state contracting laws and city procurement policies don't include a vendor preference, per se. But when all things are equal or near equal, under our policies, we always try to choose a local business. That's important to us, and we recognize the value of our business community. We're here to serve them, and we wouldn't be successful as a community without them. So, we know that.
It's a partnership.
And in addition to that, I would say that I know that a few of us up here have businesses. I have a very small, very small business, but it is listed on your website, and I assume Carol's.
We all have businesses.
Well, yeah, but some of them aren't in Oregon City.
I'm a newbie business, and I'm not in Oregon City.
But you live in Oregon City.
But I live in Oregon City.
Very good.
And you can support Oregon City.
That's right.
Yeah, are you gonna buy your Christmas gifts in Oregon City, or can we? I'm sorry.
Moving on. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Jonathan, if it wasn't for all our questions and so forth, I believe the seven of them made their presentation in less time than I wanted.
But Jonathan is representing Main Street.
That's true. These were for many people.
He's got a long street.
You did great.
This is the time for citizen comments on items that are not on our agenda. I believe we have one person...
Excuse me, Mayor. William Gifford asked to speak on this BiLocal item.
Oh, well, then, you're still on board here.
Come on up, William.
And you actually have most of the people sitting to listen to you, too.
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. I wanted to make a point and an extension of another idea. The point was that sometimes we tend to divide things. And there have been, and I think it's possibly a natural tendency, but I think that sometimes there is perceived a divide between the citizens of Oregon City and the business of Oregon City. And I hope that this presentation is really showing that the businesses are citizens of this city. And I think it's really important to understand, because too often you say, "Well, let's get the business perspective, and then let's get the citizens' perspective." And the fact of the matter is, businesses are citizens of the city and valuable citizens, contributing citizens of the city. Mr. Mayor, you said that you guaranteed something, and I'm sure that's on the tape. You'll wanna go back and listen to it.
Well, I think it's, but it is a continued, that continued use of businesses by the city.
I did not know that that was a written policy.
Well, I don't think it is.
It's not written.
As our city manager indicated, that's one of the things that was implemented soon after he came here.
And the fact that it's not written doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to continue that way, but we would like to hope that it would. I don't know what the policy would be for making that a written policy. Would that be a difficult thing?
I don't think so, but I also don't think it'll make it any more compelling to our staff. I mean, I've directed all of them to use local vendors whenever it's available to them for a fair and reasonable price consistent with our policies and state contracting rules.
Mr. Fraser, with all due respect, I appreciate your position, very much so, and I appreciate our current staff. But future city managers and future staff...
They're able to change the policy.
Yeah.
They're able to change the policy as well, but they wouldn't have that as a... Here's the guideline.
I think it's something we can look at.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you. Now, I opened it up to citizen's comments. I don't see any other... Should I make this one announcement in any case?
Yes, under adoption of the agenda.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda? Is there anything anybody wants to pull off a consent agenda?
No.
Okay. The one thing that we had here on this announcement, notice has been given that an appeal of the Portland Men's Center would be heard at tonight's meeting. This is to announce that an appeal was not submitted by the Portland Men's Center, and for this reason, we have no appeal hearing scheduled for tonight.
Correct.
Okay. And that, back to our, back to our agenda. The first thing that is before us here is an action item, is the Lynn Avenue, Leland Road, Myers Road corridor plan, and that will be coming from Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Conkle, actually.
Oh, Mr. Conkle, see?
I think there's just a continuance.
It is.
A continuance. The initial public hearing before the City Commission was originally mailed out, identifying tonight as the hearing date. The Planning Commission held their first hearing on this issue on July 14th. They continued it to the August 25th hearing, so they don't have a recommendation yet to forward to the City Commission. So, we are requesting that you open the public hearing, take testimony from any citizen that wishes to testify tonight, and then continue it to the date certain of September 17th, 2014.
Very good. Any discussion before I open the public hearing? I'm sure there's not. Open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak to this? Hearing none, except a motion to continue the public hearing.
Move to approve.
Continue until September 17.
I second that.
Okay, and that's unanimous. Motion made by Commissioner Mum, seconded by Commissioner Polly. That, we are going right down to the approval of the election results for our planning file AN 1301, and annexing certain property to the City of Oregon City. The process that we go through, as I understand it, is the Commission approves annexations to go to the vote of the people, at which, at the next appropriate election, the people vote whether to annex the property. And then that has to come back to us for approval, and that's what we have tonight.
Correct.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve 14-479 ordinance.
1009.
Yes, no?
Ordinance number 14-1009.
Oh, ordinance 14-1009.
First reading.
First reading.
I second that.
You ready?
The vote? No, no, not the vote, please. The hearing, please.
This is ordinance number 14-1009, an ordinance annexing certain property to the City of Oregon City and approving the May 2014 election results for planning file AN 1301.
I'd like to take this time to make a comment. Oh, excuse me, it's been approved unanimously. The motion made by Commissioner Mum, seconded by Commissioner Polly. I'm oftentimes at meetings where two cities are singled out, that Sherwood and Oregon City, for having voter-approved annexations. We had a period where the annexation votes were failing. But I point out to people, and they bring this out, up until the time that the recession hit, every one of our annexations were passing.
Yes, yep.
The recession hit, people saw major subdivisions stop one-fifth of the way through, developers going bankrupt. My guess is the people reacted, "Why are we approving these annexations?" We have now had a period of time where every one of the annexations have passed.
Yes.
So, voter annexations are not gonna kill development in this city. And I just wanted to, I wanted to make that point very, very strongly. And with that, we'll go on to our next agenda item. An ordinance for introduction, oh, that's the one we just did. I keep on going down. Yeah, sure it is. Contract for Architecture and Engineering Services for the renovation expansion of the Oregon City Library, an item that is near and dear to us all.
All right. So, good evening, Commissioners. So, tonight I have in front of you the final major contract for the Oregon City Library renovation and expansion, and this is for the architect. And it took a long time to do it, because we had to make sure that it worked with the contractor, which, as you know, is the CMGC process. So, we had to get through that process. And then this one was built to integrate with that, so that they don't duplicate any services, but they complement each other. And this was done with many back and forths between the architect and City Attorney Bill Kavizman, who has thoroughly vetted it. And I recommend that you approve it, not to be exceeded, in the amount of $654,370, which includes everything we need.
Commissioners, are there any questions about the contract?
I move to approve the contract for architectural and engineering services for the renovation and expansion of the Oregon City Library. Second.
This time, move by Commissioner Polly and seconded by Commissioner Mum.
Rocky and I were having a race.
And again, unanimous vote. If I might ask, at this time, Maureen, the, I know we have a building committee that is actively moving on things. Could you just take a moment, and if you, if you don't mind, I didn't ask you to do this ahead of time, but talk about the progress of the operation?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
I was gonna give you an update later, so we'll just do it now.
Okay.
So, yes, the building committee has been meeting several times to get all our infrastructure organized and everything. And we have started on some design concepts. And right now, we have four or five very strong options. And what we're gonna do on the 9th at a workshop setting is bring those to you, so that we can thoroughly discuss the wheres and the whys, and the pros and the cons of all of these options, and get your feedback. And we thought that would be perfect for a work session setting.
Yes.
And between now and then, we've done this with the library board, which was this Monday. We'll be going to the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, and we'll be having an open house. So, we'll be able to get a lot of feedback from other stakeholders before we come to you, and we'll be able to bring that information to you. And each time the architects get feedback, they kind of go back and tweak their drawings. But these are really cool drawings, because it's on software that you can, like, zoom around and get different views.
Nice.
Which is really cool. And there's some light architectural stuff on it, so that you don't get, we don't get stuck on any one look, but you can kinda see that it's more of a building, not just a blob. So, that's kinda where we are with that. And then... And then what's going on up at the lot is that we're getting complete surveys, really specific surveys done. The guys have been out there for days.
Yeah.
And they were at the, our new parking lot today, which really pleases me because, you know, we'll probably have to, what's that called? Slurry seal it before too long. I'm learning all these things that I never knew before. And so we want to be sure that, you know, we know exactly where and, you know, when we restripe and all that stuff, you know? And we're also going to have some more geotechnical stuff done so that we know exactly where the basalt is, including a test, John, can you remember the name of that test that looks like an ultrasound, a baby ultrasound, but is not a baby ultrasound?
A G O.
No, we can't remember it. Anyway, so you end up with kind of a picture of what's underneath, so that you have a better, broader view of the basalt shelf, instead of just some borings, you know? And so that's what's going on.
Very good.
Ground penetrating radar.
I was trying to recall my college geology class, it just wasn't quite coming. Too long ago.
I should know that because I signed the contract that had to be done, but anyway, yeah. So it's moving right along. And so what we hope after the workshop is that, that we start getting some really clear direction on one or two options so that we, the architects can really focus their time on that, because we need to submit something very specific for review before too long if we want to break ground in spring. Because that process will take some time. So that's our goal.
Great.
Okay?
Very good, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
So we want to take action on this?
We already did.
We are.
We already did, that's right, excuse me. Yeah, I asked, I've asked for input on the building, sorry about that. But then what we want to do is take action on the next item, the William, William, the Willamette Falls River Walk Memorandum of Understanding between Oregon City, the Metro Regional Government, Clackamas County, and the Oregon State Parks. This, I bet I, if I see Tony Conkle this time, I'll be right, right?
You got it.
Okay, very good.
We've presented tonight, proposed resolution 14-23. This memorandum of understanding between Oregon City, Metro, Clackamas County, and the State of Oregon, representing the partners who we've been working with on this, on the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, is working in a collaboration to develop a master plan for the profits, property around the four values of public access, economic development, culture and historical interpretation, and healthy habitat. This, in doing the work, we realize that investment, the public investment in a River Walk will serve as a catalytic project to, to catalyze investment back into the property as well as an opportunity for traded sector jobs to come to that property. And with that, the partners wish to enter into this MOU detailing the roles and commitment to that public investment. As many recall, in 2013, the Oregon Legislature approved $5 million through Senate Bill 5506 for this project. We need to have a financial plan approved by the state as well as a property interest in the property by March of 2015. This memorandum of understanding provides the framework and the guidance that staff needs to negotiate that easement, as well as align those financial commitments to complete the River Walk moving forward. The MOU also establishes the partners' commitments that have been made to date, acknowledging the resources and staff that has been invested in this property and this project to date, as well as the partners' commitment to the catalytic value and the importance of the River Walk as the first public investment in the property. Through this MOU, Oregon City is acknowledging their willingness to serve as owners of the River Walk with Metro, as well as taking the lead role to develop the future operations, regulatory and maintenance plan for the operation, maintenance and replacements of that River Walk as we become the responsible entity for that River Walk since it's in our jurisdiction. The memorandum of understanding was reviewed by the partners' group, which are two elected officials plus the chief administrator from each of our partners, so from Oregon City, Clackamas County, Metro, the state. The bankruptcy trustee is actually a part of that partners' group as well, but since this is an agreement between the public agencies to negotiate with the property owner, he is not a signatory to it. This MOU is reviewed by the partners and forwarded with a recommendation of approval. And so far, Clackamas County and Metro have approved the MOU as submitted. So be happy to answer any questions you may have.
You have any questions?
No, I'm very excited about this.
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment. In attending the partners' meetings, it has been so clear from the beginning, just the level of consensus among all the partners about this project, and the excitement about it, and the importance of the access, the public access piece. And I feel this MOU is very well-written, and the fact that it has already passed through Metro and Clackamas County, I think speaks volumes.
Yes.
And we're excited to move forward and make sure that we meet that March 2015 deadline so we can secure partial funding for this. So on that, I would like to make-
I'd like to make a comment. The comment I, I think people read the press realizes there's an issue at this moment between the City of Oregon City and the Clackamas County Board of Directors. Oftentimes, there are issues between the county government and the city that is in fact the county seat, and this has in no way impeded our relationships with the county on other items. And the county commission embraced this memorandum of understanding, I believe it's a four-vote in support and one abstention. But the commitment there and the presentation there of those members of the county commission that are members of the, of the group were extremely strong and supportive. They're devoting a tremendous amount of their effort to secure federal funding through a major effort to working in Washington DC. And the partnership that we've had, I think, has been a very productive one, and we're very pleased with this memorandum of understanding.
And with that, I would like to approve 14-9492, resolution number 14-23, Willamette Falls River Walk Memorandum of Understanding between Oregon City, Metro, Clackamas County, and Oregon State Parks.
Rocky, you haven't had a chance, have you? Commissioner Polly, no, she already got it. Commissioner Mum, second. The vote, please.
You can push your button now. Approved unanimously.
Yes, indeed. Well, thank you very much. Going on into our agenda, we're, we're going to go on into, actually-
Consent agenda.
The consent agenda. Do I hear approval of the consent?
Move to approve.
Second.
Oh, no.
Hey, you did it, you did it.
This is the first sheet, you did it, yeah.
No, he did, he made it.
You did it.
Motion made by Commissioner Mum and seconded by Commissioner Smoot.
But we need your vote.
You need my vote, there it comes.
There you go. Approved unanimously.
Very good. That will go to the city manager's report.
It's really common here. I almost regret that all of BiLocal folks left here because I was just typing out a message to Amber and some others. In the time I've been here, I do not remember ever denying a request from anybody at BiLocal except one time, and that was four years ago, when I was asked to advertise BiLocal stickers on the marked city vehicles, including our police cars.
Yeah.
So, city attorney and I talked about that, it was a novel idea. I certainly wouldn't lament anyone for bringing up the idea. I love the creativity of this group that we had tonight. I'm on the chamber board as well, as you know, and I go to all of the meetings. I have a good attendance record there, and I've never heard a complaint from BiLocal or a presumption that the city isn't buying enough things locally. You do not have a local vendor preference ordinance. That's kind of the highest level of thing we might be able to do, but probably a resolution, and that would be subject to statute and require, what I'm, what I'm getting at is there are lots of assumptions there tonight about whether or not we're buying enough things locally. And if anyone, any of you or any of the chamber board members or other chamber representatives or business community members have any evidence that we are not attempting to buy local, I would love to know that, so that I can address it.
I didn't feel like that was the, I think they were wanting to have a chance to put in for an RFP to do work.
Oh, and they always have that opportunity.
You know, so that's-
Yeah, we advertise locally so that they can do that.
But I think that was what it was about, more so than buying-
Yeah, I just don't, I just don't know what it's about because I'm on the chamber board and I've never heard that complaint. I've never heard even a presumption that, a couple of members have asked me, you know, can you guys buy certain products from us exclusively? And I tell them about our purchasing policies, which the, this board sees during our budget proceedings. And you endorse those purchasing policies, and of course, then we're subject to the state's contracting laws.
Right.
Not, every state has those same restrictions. I've worked in states as a city manager that had none, and so we were, had all kinds of liberties to pass these vendor preferences, and we did in some states, and we got sued in some of those states.
And some of it was good, some of it was not.
And, you know, so it's not always the best policy, but we, we do appreciate our local business community. But I'm going to reach out to the chamber board and ask them, is there something that we're missing?
Yeah.
And of course, if there is, we'll address it. Then next, I wanted to say that a couple of weeks ago, I was contacted by somebody at, my earliest city employer was the City of Independence, Missouri, on the other end of the trail. In 1981, I graduated from the police academy there, and I worked there for nine years before I went to law school. I got, and I'm friends with their city manager, their mayor was one of, my first police captain, ended up being the mayor of that city for two terms. I won't go into all the details, but my parents still live in eastern Jackson County, near Independence, and they called, their chamber representative called and wanted us to participate in a virtual handshake as a city on the other end of the Oregon Trail. Now, Independence, as most of you probably know, is the beginning of the Oregon-Santa Fe California Trail. And all of those trails begin there, on the Independence Square, where Harry Truman has a big statue of him next to the Truman Courthouse. And they have a festival every summer there called Santa Calagon, Santa Calagon Days. It draws about 250,000 people. I mean, it shuts down the city for about a week. It's a terrible time to be in law enforcement there because you cannot get a break, you cannot get a vacation. But it's a really big thing for Kansas City, the Kansas City metro area, and I think they told me that they're expecting viewers and participants this year upwards of 500,000 people. So they called and asked our mayor if he would be willing to engage in what's called a virtual handshake. I think what they're going to do is have some sort of Jumbotron up at the square, a giant screen, and they're going to have mayors from all of the trail cities. They're trying to get mayors from all the trail cities, so I was pretty enthusiastic about this and, and might have crossed the line a little bit by encouraging that our, our mayor would be likely to support this kind of thing.
Oh, sure.
And I read that correctly, of course, well, luckily.
And possibly cost him.
Yeah. And he said, can I get out of this? And then later, he found out what it was about, and he didn't want to get out of it.
Ah, for God's sake.
But I think, Mayor, with all due respect, I think you probably encourage your participation and our zeal for being a part of the event, probably encouraged the other trail cities because-
My understanding is that all the mayors have committed to it.
Yes.
That's the mayors of Independence.
Yes.
Of Placerville, of Santa Fe, and of Oregon City.
Yes. And at the time, only Independence' mayor had committed, and so they were kind of worried if, are we going to be able to get everybody? And I think after you committed, then everything just fell into place for them. Anyway, that's going to be August 29th at, at 6:30, and you're going to be live, I think, on camera on the Jumbotron in Independence.
We had, I just might, if I, you may have some other things announced, but I'll just piggyback a little bit here. Katie Riggs has been tremendous in organizing this effort, and we, we've kind of decided how our piece would be. We're, we're going to have a moving Willamette Falls here on the screen.
Oh, nice.
So we'll have the, we'll have the falls in the background. I think they're trying to limit mayors to each of two minutes. I ran a go-through, and it worked. I can, I can do that, I can do it.
Katie does have that hook, you remember that?
So, it's, I'm looking forward, of course, to the other presentations. And like you said, it probably is going to constitute a map of the, of the, of the three trails there, and somehow, our, our presence at each of those points of the different mayors will be recognized and may simply be our hand out there at our site or in some fashion. That still has to be worked out, but it looks like it's going to be very exciting.
Yeah. Independence is a, Independence is a good friend. They, in fact, when Officer Luki was killed, I got many calls from Independence Police Department. I think you guys got some flowers or something as well. So next, Wyatt Parneau is going to give you guys a biennial budget midterm update. As you know, we're now on a two-year budget.
Yes.
And so Wyatt's going to give you the quick down and dirty on how we're tracking so far, and then he has a special announcement that we're particularly proud of that he wants to share.
Thank you, David, and thank you, Mayor Neely, and members of the commission. I'm going to be really brief, there's two items I want to cover. One is, the first one is that I'm proud to announce that the finance department will be issuing this week the mid-biennium financial update.
Nice.
As requested by the commission. Want to give you a little bit of background, I know that you all know this, but for members of the public, this is the first time that we're operating under a two-year budget, the biennial budget. And when we put together this document, as you know, we go through quite an extensive process, including that the city commission thoroughly reviews this document along with five other citizen members that make up the budget committee. And there were a lot of benefits, when I first started here, the mayor and the city manager noted for me that if we do a biennial budget, you'll save hundreds of hours of administrative time, and we can focus on other important projects of the city. And I was hooked. So we did that, it took a lot of work, but I was super excited for it. And William Giffords in the audience, I think he was one of the members of the budget committee that said, you know, it'd be nice to hear about halfway through the two-year budget how we're doing. So that's what this report's going to do for us. We'll send this out to all of you and to the members of the budget committee.
Okay.
This week.
Great.
And also, we'll publish it online, so if, if members of the community want to check it out and see how we're doing. I, I'd like to provide you with all kinds of sensational action out of this report, but the fact of the matter is, we're, we're following along with our work plan just as we expected, and revenues are in line with what we projected, and some revenues came in a little higher, in fact, most did slightly. And the department directors have done a fantastic job of operating within their budget. So you'll see, you know, here's the total budget, and the actuals are about 50% at the halfway mark, so.
Good.
I think you'll be really impressed with that. But my contact information will be at the end of the report. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me at any time.
Sure.
The other thing I'd like to do, I'd like to ask Maria McElveen to just come up and stand here for a minute. You recall that I introduced Maria to you about a year and a half ago. She's the deputy finance director here at the, at Oregon City, and I'm just elated that Maria's here. She's done so much to improve our financial reporting, including being the primary person that put together the budget document for us, also our financial report for our annual audit that's had a clean opinion. And there's one more thing that I want to talk about. When I first started here, David came to me and he said, Wyatt, another objective that we have for you is to apply for the distinguished presentation of budget award. And I said, David, I'm happy to do that, and I think this was right before Maria got here, and I was a little nervous, I said, David, but just so long as I can tell the commission that no city ever gets this thing in the first year that you apply. So we, we included that as one of your commission goals, and the truth is, no city really gets this thing in the first year you apply, it's just because you add so many, so many additional items and components to the budget, it becomes quite an extensive document, so it's hard to hit the mark. Well, then, we were fortunate enough to have Maria come aboard, and she is an expert. As you remember, she came to us from Florida, working as a finance director there, has extensive background in budget reporting as well as management. And among all the other things that she does for us here, she put together the budget document, and after she put together, she added all the additional requirements that were required for the presentation of the award. And I'm sad to report to you that it's true that most cities don't get the award in their first year. However, we did, and so Maria's got the award here. And Maria's going to present the award to David Frazier.
Yay.
What's passing around?
We are the city of first.
They brought up the first city, and again, so that's tremendous. Thank you so much, David Everett. That's wonderful.
As you're looking at that award, I'll tell you, it's true, this is the first time that we've ever received this award, and it does wonderful things for us in terms of applying for loans at lower interest rates and just saying outstanding things about our cities.
Nice.
And it recognizes what we've done. Special thanks to David for bringing that to our attention, Maria for preparing it, and all the members of the budget committee.
Yes.
That participated to make it happen, so thank you.
And when Wyatt says cities don't usually get it, I'm not aware, I, I've tried to get it the first year in other cities I've managed, and we've just never been able to, so this is a, this is a first in my career, almost 30 years, that I've seen one of these get done in one try, so.
You're in the city of first, so there you go.
So, somebody owes somebody a beer.
I did want to make a comment, it's true that shortly, I, after I came here, I went in to talk to David Frazier about the possibility of a biennial budget. I do want to credit somebody else, though. When Mayor Williams was the mayor of Oregon City, he, he made that proposal, and at, at that time, maybe even- And at that time, maybe the administration wasn't prepared to go that route, but this administration was. And I want to compliment all of you in that effort to make this biennial budgeting process a successful one. I think, as you say, it's... Well, initially, it didn't say time, of course, but it does over the two-year period. And things will probably go easier that way once you've got it set up to operate that way. So, I want to compliment all of the finance department in terms of the great work you've done. Thank you so much.
And next, we hear from Maureen Cole for an update on the status of the library project.
Well, we already did that.
So, you're done?
Oh, but wait. So, oh, but wait. So, I did just want to mention that, speaking of the Ermitainger, we are going to have a beautiful display at the library on the history of the Ermitainger and also what is going on with it right now. And along with that will be a trivia contest about the Ermitainger. And the grand prize will be an 1835 coin that was donated to us.
Very cool.
Nice. Very cool.
Thought you might like to know that.
If you need any help, let me know.
Okay. Thank you.
Because I'm sure you've been getting a lot of questions about it.
Yeah. Very cool.
We have been getting a lot.
I think that's enough. I think I should stop.
All right.
Yes, I've got some announcements. The League of Oregon Cities schedules what is called a city hall week. Is that annual or biannual? Do you know?
Annual.
It's an annual. And cities are selected to have the city hall group come together and talk about the important issues that the League of Oregon City are involved in and are actually pushing for legislative approval in the next session. They selected Oregon City to represent two of the state senatorial districts, our own, and the one that extends up through Milwaukee and over to Johnson City. We're inviting to be participants the state represented senators from those particular districts. My understanding is that two of them are not able to come.
At this point.
At this point. One of the seats are vacant. Normally, we'd have six people represented there, the two representatives from each of those districts plus a senator from each of those. But one of the seats are vacant. We'll be looking at other people to be on the panel. These are people that will be on the panel. There will be a League of Oregon Cities representative there to facilitate the dialogue that's going to occur on these. The League of Oregon Cities has ranked... You all made input, if you remember, into our top four. I believe two of our top four ended up in the top four of all the cities that reported in. While less than half of the cities gave the recommendations, those that made recommendations, I believe, represented about 85% of the population of Oregon. We anticipate that there will be certain of those recommendations that will be focal points for the discussion. I have asked previous state senator, I believe his president, Senator Vern Duncan to be the moderator, and he has agreed to do so. He has a great job. He's a... When he was in his office, he did a great job and worked in a bipartisan fashion with the members of the legislation. He was also previous school superintendent. So, he's an ideal person for that, and he was pleased to do that. We'll be having... We've had one meeting, a call in terms of what we'd be doing. I've invited Vern Duncan to come to the next discussion with the league in terms of setting it out. It will be held on September 11th at 7:00 PM at the Museum of the Oregon Territory.
Now, is that open to the public?
Yeah. Yes, yeah. It's a public meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Mayor, you probably saw that the league adopted the top priorities, and one of them was to defend home rule authority to manage rightfully.
That was one of the four. That was one of the four, yes. So, any questions about that? Another comment I made, and this came up at the Metropolitan Advisory Committee, the TriMet representative there said they would be restoring frequent service on line 33. You might know that they cut back on some of the schedule things. It turns out that's put a far heavier demand on the express service that we have on 99. And so, they decided to go back to keep the 99 going, but they'll go back to express service on 33 at the end of this month.
And to clarify, that's the one that goes up Hopeville?
That's the one that goes 33... No, 33 is the one that goes all the way up Moala into the college. So, those that use public transit should be happy to hear that. At the shortest peak, right now, the shortest peak interval for 33 is, I think, about 16 minutes. And it'll be reduced to 13 minutes between the runs. Now, remember, those of you who have the experience, half of those go up to the community college and half of them don't. But the express service originates at the community college. So, you'll still have several, during the peak hour, several runs with 99 and 33 going from the community college into Portland and beyond. We've got some vacancies, or the same vacancies that I've announced before. We've got two natural resource committee vacancies. Those I will... If there are applications, I'll seek to fill them by the end of my tenure as mayor. We've got one vacancy for the budget committee. And we'll keep that as an open vacancy, but the budget committee is not going to meet till next year. So, we'll take all applications and let the next mayor make the assignment to whoever makes the assignment to.
Right.
Yeah. And I might have a couple of other announcements, but I think other people will be able to handle those. So, I'll start from my left again. Anything to report?
I have nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Mom?
Oh, me? Okay. So, I attended the C4 meeting, and we talked about forming an act, which is an area commission on transportation. And the mayor, John Lewis, David Frazier, and myself are going to meet and talk about this more. And it's about transportation funding. So, if we have an act, we have a seat at the table, and we can try and get more funding for roads. So, we're going to dive into that a little bit more. Also, at the C4 meeting, they are scheduling the C4 retreat, tentatively for October 2nd and 3rd. And they are asking all cities to donate to the retreat plus pay whoever attends their spot to attend. Clackamas County will not provide the facilitator or any of that. So, they're asking all cities to make a donation of some sort, but they didn't know exactly for sure how much that donation would be.
What was that for again?
C4 retreats. So, they're asking...
I don't think we had one last year.
No, we didn't have one last year. We had one the year before.
Any commission members that attend, of course, your expenses are reimbursable.
But this is above and beyond.
They're asking for something above and beyond that?
Yeah. So, it's going to come directly to probably you if the city chooses to spend that.
So, I'm assuming a pro-rata share. Is it going to be based on population?
It's going to be divided amongst the cities. The CPOs and the hamlets will not chip in for any of that.
How many's going to chip in, then?
You know, that was kind of not very clear, but you know.
Okay, we'll clear that up. I mean, we've got 400,000 people. We've got 35,000. I'm kind of thinking they'll participate at some level.
So, anyways, I just, you know, wanted to let you guys know about that. And also, we have the Lock Fest on September 13th. Jody Carson asked for a reminder of that. Tours of both mills from 10 to 5. And this commission had a great night at the concert, thanking all of our volunteers. So, that was a great recognition for them. And the commission, most of the commissioners, except for myself, went to the barbecue for the sister city. I'm sure Rocky could talk to that. I had other plans, so that couldn't get out of. So, I apologize for that. And then Antique Fair is coming up on Sunday, the 24th.
Which is this coming Sunday?
Yes.
Yes, already.
That's all I know.
I think they still might be looking for volunteers for that event, too.
Yes. Volunteer is helpful.
The Lock Fest is what day?
Jody said it was September 13th.
Okay. And I think that's also a car show on Main Street, if I am correct? So, that'll be a lot of events going on. Yeah. Barbecue last night with our sister city group. We have a delegation from Tereshina, Japan. And the sister city committee hosted a barbecue last night, which was a lot of fun. And then, this morning, we hosted a reception here at city hall. And following the reception, we took a trip to Willamette Falls, and Tony took everyone on a tour. I think everyone was very impressed by the tour and got a good look at not only the falls, but the mill site and also the icons on our...
Look at Nancy. She's showing us the...
They brought many gifts.
They brought many gifts and very generous gifts. And there was another... Is the plate... There's another piece, art piece.
I don't have it.
Why do we bring it to the next commission meeting?
It was donated to the city. Anyway, I really enjoyed that.
They always do such a wonderful job.
She's showing that off, but I want to point out, they gave one to each of the commissioners.
Oh, nice.
No, that wasn't to me. I was just showing.
Just showing it off.
Yes, and then we had a kind of a formal recognition of them being here today. And the tour followed that. But there were seven people that had come from Japan. The... I'll call him deputy mayor. I don't know what the term is, but the...
Vice mayor, I think, wasn't it?
His card says deputy mayor, but they introduced him as vice mayor. He's also the school superintendent.
Right.
Okay. We also had the head of their sister city committee and several of the other members of their sister city committee and an interpreter. And we all learned to slow down our English a little bit, so the translation worked a little better. You know, I tried to explain a couple of things. They were kind of complicated, and we went through it. But then I went back and did it again. But there's an interesting tie-in to Japan that I was not aware of until about six or seven months ago. Back in the days of the Hudson's Bay Company, early on, actually, there was a terrible typhoon that actually carried a fishing vessel off course, and it ended up landing on our Pacific coast. One of the tribes found the group, and they were in the tribal community. And one of the fur trappers found out that these people had come in and were at this one Indian cabin, informed Dr. John McGlocklin, who then negotiated to have them released to the Hudson's Bay Company. And these three fishermen, over a long process, went to England and on and back to Asia. There was a man, and I don't want anybody to giggle, there was a man by the name of Ronald McDonald at the time. And he met these fishermen. He became very interested in the Japanese culture, and he made a decision on his own to go to Japan. At that time, Japan was a closed country. Relations with any other entity outside Japan was forbidden. So, he went to Japan and got arrested. Fortunately, the imperial court made a great decision because they recognized history was going to change, and they had nobody, had nobody that knew English. And so, they took their prisoner and made him an English teacher. And when Admiral Perry went in to force his way into Japan, there was a delegation of Japanese who could speak English and talk and discuss negotiations with Admiral Perry. So, there's this very important connection between the Hudson's Bay Company and Japan that really facilitated Japan coming out and being part of the global community. And I think a lot of people aren't aware of that, and I wasn't until just a few months ago. There is a society in Japan that is dedicated to the recognition of Ronald McDonald. And all those people there also know a great deal about Dr. John McGlocklin as it related to this particular relationship. It's an interesting story, and I wasn't aware of it. And I think there are certain people that are aware well that the group that came in from Tereshina were not. And so, I tried to describe it, and it was a little difficult to interpret it, but it's a great connection.
This is our 40th year.
That's right.
With our sister city relationship. And I would say, I think, one of the best reactions this morning was the response when we were explaining, I think the mayor was explaining, that we are all volunteers as a commission. And there was this reaction. It took them a while to understand that, but I think they were impressed by that as well. It was fun. Good day.
Good.
Anything else for the good of order?